Alrighty, good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:03. Please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance, or for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, team. Good evening and welcome to our last school committee meeting of 2023. Not gonna lie, I'm feeling a little emotional. It's my last one, but I will try to hold back the tears. Familias y miembros de la comunidad, si desean traducción tenemos audífonos aquí esta noche. Team, we have our wonderful student Ashley from the Berkowitz School, who is here to perform for us. Ashley, take the stage. Ashley, thank you for blessing us with such a beautiful voice. Way to end 2023, right? One more round of applause for Ashley. Thank you, Ashley. Alrighty, team. Back to business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 2nd and the special meeting on November 29th?
I'm moved.
Alrighty, next up, we have public comment. If there are any members in the community that would like to speak, please join us at the podium.
Hello. It's Amal Avideo, 140 Highland Street in Chelsea. Everybody's favorite city councillor at large. Thank you, Ashley, for blessing us with that song. It kind of reminds us why we do the work that we do, so I appreciate it. Honorable members of the school committee, it's an honor for me to be here with you today for a few different reasons. First and foremost, as many of you know, I didn't seek reelection, and my last day will be at the end of December, so I get the bittersweet feeling. I just wanted to come here and thank each and every one of you for the time that we worked together in the past eight years. Yesterday, at a joint school committee and city council meeting, Jeanette, school committee woman Jeanette Velez, said something about, "We haven't always agreed, but we've always respected each other." And so that has always been the case, and I really just commend all of you for the work that you've done and when we've worked together. It's been an honor, and I wish you all the best. When I first came onto the council in 2016, we didn't have a lot of representation on either of the boards. We had some, but, you know, we've changed that. And so for me, like, it feels amazing to be able to walk away and see some of the young people that are coming in. And I know that some of you are going over to the city council, and that there are new, younger people that are coming in onto the school committee. So I just want to wish everybody in the school committee luck, and members that are going over to the city council luck. If there's ever anything I can do, I gauge my success by how I support the young people in our community, particularly young people of color, especially women. So any support that I can offer, I'm always available. And I'm gonna bridge over to something that might not be as happy, but at the end of the day, you know, even if I'm standing alone, I'm gonna stand tall, right, Ashley? We've done a lot of work in this community to build trust, to rebuild trust, particularly when the odds were stacked against us, when we didn't have representation on these boards. And we all worked very hard to make sure that the voices of people were being lifted and that we were doing the work of the people. During COVID, we all banded together in a way that I've never seen anywhere. In Chelsea, we celebrate diversity. We have so many beautiful qualities. But in building that trust is an obligation that we have as elected officials, to be able to show up with integrity. A couple of weeks ago, maybe like a couple months ago, a parent came to the city council to speak about team football, Chelsea Pride-specific, that was being run by one of the members of the school committee, District 1 School Committee member Sean Oregan. And that will be the only time that I say his name. This person was running Chelsea Pride. Apparently, parents received a text after they signed up and paid for registrations. The league that supersedes Chelsea Pride decided to cancel Chelsea because apparently the district councillor and his brother who were running the league doctored and falsified medical records so that young people would be able to play who otherwise wouldn't be able to. There was a question about $6,000 that the city gave as a scholarship that nobody knows really where it went. I bring this up, I understand that there's really no mechanism to hold elected officials accountable. I get that. At the end of the day, it happens at the ballot box. But I want to make sure, because I took an oath, and I made a promise after what happened with school committee member Henry Wilson, that anybody that tried to inflict harm in our community, that I would not sit idly by. We can't build trust in this community and have the trust of our parents when we have school committee members that is violating the trust of the community in that way. Luckily, there's a reorganization meeting happening, and the league that supersedes has decided that they will be willing to work with Chelsea so long as the Oregans are out. I'm not here to talk about the Oregans. If there was a mistake made, by all means, show your face. But when we had a city council subcommittee a couple of weeks ago, where he can come and speak, we arranged for him to be accommodated and joined virtually. He chose not to show up. There is not accountability, there's not an admission of anything, there's not calling parents, nothing. And so, you know, how can we build trust with parents when we have people on the school committee that are willing to do this and not even willing to show their face? So I'm here just to say that I personally think he should step down. I would. If my trust was being questioned, we've worked too hard, all of you have worked too hard, to make sure that we built trust in this community for someone to take advantage of our community in that way. So with some negative comments that were made in the league that, well, Chelsea parents don't show up anyway, and this is a narrative that I don't support. And so anyway, I could sit here forever and talk about it, but I just want to commend you all for the work you do and make sure that I'm calling out the action or inaction, inappropriateness of this particular district councillor, in hopes that either he decides to become accountable, responsible, and do the right thing and steps down, and allow somebody else to represent the community that has the needs of our children at the forefront, or that at the next election, that we show up and we make sure that we represent people to these bodies that represent the community in a healthy and in a way of integrity. So I'm sorry that I had to end on that note, but I am excited. I'll go back to the positive. I am excited for the future of the city because a lot of you are still here. We have new people coming in. It's a beautiful energy, just knowing that we are all committed to a collective agenda that puts Chelsea at the forefront. So again, it's been an honor to work with you all. Thank you for indulging me, and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the community that would like to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, that closes public comment. Next up, I will now turn it over to Dr. Beta for our presentations.
Okay, great. Good evening. I'm very excited about this portion of our school committee agenda. So first, and I'd like to actually congratulate Mr. Adam Delaney, who was appointed to the Melrose Superintendentcy. Was it last night? I don't know the night. When was it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, so Tuesday night. So Adam will be with us until June, and then he's gonna head over to Melrose. But I just wanted to say, Adam, we're so proud of you. And I always said, it's time for you to fly, and we are all going to miss you, this entire community. It's a bittersweet for us. But we're very happy for you, so congratulations. And the next person who will be recognized tonight, and she didn't know why she was called here, but I wanted to recognize Brenda Penya, who is new to our district, but has just been such a joy to have. And she's our coordinator of social work, and she is a wealth of knowledge. And I have so enjoyed having Ms. Penya here with us in Chelsea. And so I'm just gonna read a certificate of recognition to Brenda Penya. This certificate is given to recognize your appointment with the state of Massachusetts as the Commissioner for Essex County. Your appointment will bring gender equality to women across the state of Massachusetts, and will have a positive impact for all. Congratulations on your appointment to the state of Massachusetts, the Commissioner for Essex County. So congratulations. Okay, and the next awards will be a little bit more emotional, I think, too. So our first award is to Kelly Garcia. This certificate is proudly presented to Kelly Garcia in appreciation of her devoted and invaluable services on the Chelsea School Committee from 2016 through 2023, and as the 2023 Chelsea School Committee Chairwoman the 7th day of December 2023. Congratulations. Yeah, okay, because we're gonna be getting up and down. So the next award is to... The next award is to Jeanette Velez in appreciation of her devoted and invaluable services on the Chelsea School Committee from 2011 to 2023, the 7th day of December 2023. Congratulations, Jeanette. And then our next award is for Kathy Cabral, because she is having served, I'm just gonna read it. So in appreciation of her devoted and invaluable services as the 2023 Chelsea School Committee Vice Chair the 7th day of December 2023. And the next one is for Naomi Zabit in appreciation of her devoted and invaluable services on the Chelsea School Committee from 2022 through 2023, and as the 2023 Chelsea School Committee Delegate to the Shore Collaborative the 7th day of December 2023. Okay, and our last one is to Mr. Roberto Jimenez Rivera. In appreciation of his devoted and invaluable services on the Chelsea School Committee from 2020 through 2023, and as the 2023 Chelsea School Committee Delegate to the Chelsea City Council on the 7th day of December 2023. Congratulations.
Alrighty. I'd actually like for the members who are not returning, if they'd like to say a few words now, that we have an audience and we just received these beautiful gifts. I'd like to open the floor to those who would like to speak.
I will let Jeanette go first.
Ms. Velez, you have the floor.
I don't want to cry, but like my husband said, I've been, "You've been agitated for the past two weeks, because you know you're ending." I think now that he's gonna have me home in the evenings. I want to get through this without getting too emotional. You know, but I chose, I chose to end. I have other goals in mind, so I need to focus on me, because I'm not getting any younger. But I must say, these 12 years, 12-plus have been amazing. And I just, first of all, I want to say a big thank you to the school committee that I entered back in 2012. Anna Hernandez was on the seat, Lucia was on the seat, Lisa Line Weaver, Edward Els, Ramona Foster, Rosemary Carlisle, and the late Mr. Maurice Segal. This is the school committee that I walked into. It wasn't easy, because at that time, there wasn't a lot of representation. So even though we still had two members there, me coming in, I still had a little pushback, but not from all the members at that. But I did learn a lot from them. Lisa Line Weaver was a big mentor for me, so I appreciate that. And then over the years, just building relationship, my time as chair, all those years, Jasenia, Kelly, Anna, you guys supported me and believed in me. And whatever I said, you know, we should do this, you guys stood by me, and I appreciate that. Kelly. She's like my little sister. I appreciate that respect you gave me when I would call you just to say, hey, what are you doing? You know, and you knew it was out of love, because I wanted you to succeed, right? As I tell Kathy now, you know, so proud of you. You sat there where these students are, look where you are now. So whatever comes is out of love, because I really want you to succeed. Jasenia, thank you for always supporting me. Roberto, I wish you the best in your next endeavor. And Kelly, too, now you guys both together on that side. Maybe had to come over there and harass you. I don't know. But whenever you... So Anna, I've known you longer, but Roberto actually has come in my house and sat down and had dinner with me. Whenever you want, my doors are open. Gladie, we didn't sit too long together here, but I'm always here for you, to support you. Naomi, it's been a pleasure being here with you. And then to all those amazing educators at the schools. I built great relationships, starting from the Early Learning Center where my boys were there. I volunteered so much, one of the parents in the classroom thought I was the para. I'm like, no, I'm just... Because I always felt so welcomed, from the principal to the teachers. When I transitioned to the Kelly School with the boys, I was always there. And a lot of those educators are still here in the district, which made me feel so good, because they were so invested in our students, and they've been around for so long. Sitting here, we've expanded the Caminos Program, a program that I'm so proud of, and is the COA. And even if I'm not sitting at this committee, you better call me for those Thanksgiving. I've been there every year. I love to help and serve. I just love the program, the opportunity it offers our students. So I'm very proud that I was here to see that. Proud to see more liaisons come to our district when we didn't have it. So many amazing things has happened over the past 12 years, and there's still more to do. But I'm so happy and appreciative that I had the experience here and that I'm leaving behind so many great friends, and that I met so many great friends. And I'll miss the students, the graduations, the concerts. But if I get invited, I will show up, because I love it. And to our students, we want to lift student voices, but let it be your voice, not the voice of another adult telling you this should be. Let it come from you. You guys are smart. You know what you want in life. Chase it. Never say you can't do it, and never put pressure on yourself that you need to accomplish it by a certain time. The time will come. Everything falls into place. As long as you work at it every day, give it a little. And maybe if you need to take that break, take the break. But always continue, because if it's in your heart, it's there for a reason. It's not that it came out of nowhere, so. It's not that it came out of nowhere, so follow your dreams. And thank you, everybody. Wow, and I held it together. Thank you. Adam, we'll miss you, but we know where to find you.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. Any other members? Ms. Abbott?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to make this very short and sweet. My time on school committee has been very short and very, very sweet. It's been really, truly a pleasure to work with all of you. And it feels really good to be a part of something that means so much to everybody who's on the team. That's not always the way. And I have to say, the most special, I mean, it's been great being here with everyone. The most special, special experience for me was shaking the kids' hands as they walked across that stage. That was, I don't, I haven't had another experience like that. So this has been really very, very special. And I thank everybody who voted for me and put me here the first time and tried to get me here the second time. I really appreciate it. And it was, this was a really a lovely experience, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Mr. Jimenez?
Yeah, I guess I want to start by just kind of noting that the, I think just four of us, right? Naomi, Jeanette, Kelly and myself. The four of us who are leaving, right, are folks who have deep experience working in education, a special educator, somebody who's working in family engagement right now, special education, and myself having worked with teachers in Boston and college access for many years as well. You know, it just, it goes to show how much we have in our community, people who care deeply about education and who are willing to step up. And so I, I, I'm excited for the new batch of folks that are coming on. But at the same time, you know, I know Ms. Garcia and I are stepping into a new role, but Ms. Velez and Ms. Abbott, we will miss you. And I really just wish that we could just grow the school committee by two and keep the both of you in addition to the new folks. Because I think it is really important that we have folks who, who know what it's like to do the work that we do and who cares so much about this. So yeah, so that's, I just wanted to say that. In terms of, you know, myself, I, you know, having, having just moved to Chelsea, well, I keep saying it was recent, but now it's been like half a decade. You know, I, I, I came in thinking that I would run for, for school committee eventually and then people were like, you should do it. You know, we, we believe in the work that you've done and, and we think that you should do it. And that's ultimately why, why I ran. And, and for me, it's always been about, you know, ask questions. You know, I, I don't know everything, even though it might feel like I do sometimes that when I, when I speak, I really, I really don't. And I think it's important that we, we always try to ask questions, make sure that we, we understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, so that we can think about different ways, how to, how to support what's happening. And, and so that's what's been really important to me. And I'm just really, really excited that that's the kind of students that we are, we're really trying to develop here in Chelsea, right? We're not just educating our students on, you know, learning dates and learning math, right? We're, we're really thinking, how are we going to create citizens for our community? And really pushing our students to come back and to contribute to our community. And so I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I am really going to miss being on this, on the school committee. I, I cared so deeply about education that, you know, I really, this is a special place. And not to say the city council is not, but I, I, I really, I think the work that we do here is setting up future generations of Chelsea. And, and in a way that the council doesn't quite do, right? It's, it's a different type of work. And, and so I'm, I'm just really excited to see what y'all are going to do in the coming years. And definitely willing and happy to support it from the council side. So please, as Ms. Velez said, please keep inviting us to the events. And also, if there's anything that we can do on the policy side, please, please do because it's really important that we continue to work together. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Oh, boy. I will keep it short because you know the waterworks. But first and foremost, I'd like to thank the community, my community of Chelsea, who year, oh, Lord. Year after year, believed in me. And you know, allowed me to work alongside this phenomenal team. Okay, so first, my community, second, my mom. Mommy, she's not here, she's in Puerto Rico, living her best life. Pero, it is because of her that I am sitting here. La lucha fue bien fuerte. The fight was really, really tough when she grew up in this town. And I am proud to see that this body here reflects our beloved community of Chelsea. And, and even though I'm leaving to the council, I am still fighting for our students, for Ashley, for Jose, for all my kids. And so the fight will continue, but as Roberto said, right, we're just joining the other body in the city, we're not leaving the city. We will continue to fight for this community. And I'd like to take a quick moment to, to thank the veteran members who were with me since I was 21 and a first-year teacher, first-year grad student, and who encouraged me to continue running for office. And so Jacenia. You're like my second mom here. Jacenia worked with my mom. And so you're like my mini Soki here, and so thank you. I'll make it quick, I'll make this quick. Every phone call, every, you know, every conversation. We, we've done phenomenal work in this city. So thank you, thank you for everything, and all me, I love you. Our first Latina superintendent. Thank you for all that you do for our students. And know that I'm still a phone call away if you need me. And know that I'm so grateful for your leadership and for all that you do for our community. No more tears. Okay. Ja, ja, sorry, team. Back to Dr. Bata. I know, I didn't know when tissues.
Thank you. I do want to just say to the school committee, especially to the outgoing members, so grateful for everyone and truly grateful for the school committee that hired me. You took a chance, I had not been a superintendent yet. And, and it's always a risk when you hire someone who hasn't been in this seat. And I'll never forget the day that I walked into the right band room, like it was yesterday. And I walked in and I saw the U-shaped table in there and all of these people, everyone. And, and I had this interview and it felt like home. And I was able to just really connect during that interview. And Janet, Jeanette followed me out and with, kind of with tears in your eyes. And you're like, that story that you shared about that young man. And, and then a couple, a month later, it was a little bit of a long process. I get the call and it was from Jeanette. I was driving, so, but we're calling to let you know you're superintendent. And I'm just so grateful for each and every one of you who supported me, who hired me. And then during COVID, was, it was such a difficult time to be a superintendent. Many of my colleagues that were superintendents during COVID have either retired or resigned and said, we don't want to be superintendents anymore. And this school committee did the right thing for the city of Chelsea during COVID. You stood by my side, you, we worked through it together. And those were some really rocky times. And I'm just so grateful for this school committee that always, always supported this community. And things looked different for us as, as, as we were leading in Chelsea during that time. And it was a team and it was a we. And I'm so proud of how we led during that time. And then the equity work that we've been able to do. We recently presented as some school committee members, Roberto, Akati and Jeanette were there. And then Javin and myself and Erin, Brenda, thank you for bringing the other kids. But we spoke at the Massachusetts School Committee Association about our equity work that we're doing in the city of Chelsea. And, and Monica, you were there too. But it was, it, the theme of the presentation was, you have to have a systems approach to equity and it starts from the top, meaning the school committee. And I, as a superintendent, cannot do the work of diversification and recruiting and retaining diverse educators. And equity, if I don't have the support of school committee. All of you have always supported the work of equity and I am so grateful and so honored to be working with the school committee that I, that we have here. And I will miss the four of you that are leaving. Roberto, your questions made me stronger. You, you, you always, you, you questioned in a way that made me think, you know what? You're, you're right, let me, let's go back. And, and I thank you for that. And I know you'll do that at the city council. And, and Jeanette, you're, you're, you're so solid in who you are as a leader and the way you show up and your passion and your love for our students. And I know we'll continue to invite you to everything. Don't you worry. Ron, you remember that, okay? So it's just, well, you and Jade together as a team, the way you love our students, it's, it's, comes from the heart and, and that is so evident, so thank you. And Naomi, you weren't with us long, but you were consistent on showing up to the Shore Collaborative and you loved doing it. And I know how much you love special education and maybe we can hire you someday. I don't know, but I just, we, I know you love children. So I, I was honored, I was honored to work with you, even if it was just a very short time. And thank you. And for Kelly, you were the chair the entire time I've been superintendent. And there were many late phone calls, especially during COVID, about what to do. Where are we going to do? How are we going to handle this? And through that, we developed a relationship. And I'm so grateful for your support and just, we, we navigated it as, as much as we could and with everybody. But it was, it was a time I'll never forget in my career. It was probably the hardest times that I've ever experienced in my 27 years of education. And Kelly, I am grateful to have a sister by my side and I'm, I'm always here too. So thank you. And I love you too. And I love you all, so.
Sorry. And I said I was not going to talk, but there's one unsung hero that sits over there. It's our Veronica, who has to hear. Yes, so the public may not know, but the school committee could be a handful and Veronica gets all the phone calls. So, pero, you could call me if the new members are trying to, because I'll come and let them know. But you're truly amazing, selfless. I, I'm like, is she real? Because since the day I met you, you've always been like that. I think I just met you the first time, you're already hugging and kissing me. And I'm like, oh my God, who is this? But I just want to let you know that we love you, we appreciate you. And I know I didn't drive you crazy, but you know, we still, we all appreciate you. And thank you for being our clerk and sticking by us through all the crazy times.
Thank you. I'm really going to miss all four of you. Invaluable to our, to our team.
Okay, now that's, I'm done.
All right, so I'm going to go on to just a few things on my report and I'll be brief. On Tuesday, at the tree lighting, we had our students perform. They did a fabulous job, so I hope that this is a continued tradition for tree lighting. And then January 14th, our boys' basketball team is going to be playing in a tournament at the TD Garden. So it's not every day that you get to play basketball in the TD Garden. And then on December, on December 12th, we have our Chelsea High School Winter Concert. So please come. And that is it for right now. Now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Delaney for the indicators of success.
Thank you, Dr. Abada. I don't know how I follow that. I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, acknowledge the joy I've had working with all of you, particularly the four that are leaving as a prospective superintendent elsewhere. I can only hope that I can have the same kind of working relationship that I've been having as a deputy with you guys. And it was really an important factor as I did my search to try to find a school committee that was as supportive and talented as, as you all. So with that, I'm going to go right to the indicators of success. And per tradition, I'll turn it right over to Roberto for questions.
One last time.
One last time. And I'll say, I don't have an answer for that, but I'll get back to you next month. That's been a trick of mine.
You got like 20 days.
All right, so first off, the district-wide daily attendance rate. We have two columns in November, one is for the month and one is year-to-date. And for those that have the packet, you'll see the color coding. As compared to last month, we do have slight dips in grades nine, 10, 11 and 12, as well as grades three and seven. All other grades either stayed the same or improved over the previous month, which is kind of cool because you have Thanksgiving there. And you tend to have, you know, the first two months, you tend to have better attendance. So we were able to hold strong there. But the good news here is in the year-to-date column, these percentages are as compared to last year total. So currently, we are on pace to improve in every single grade with the exception of grade nine. Grade nine is slightly off the pace from the previous year, but every other grade has a higher attendance rate than they did as compared to the total 22, 23 school year. Onto the next page, which would be page two. This is the high school dropout rate. And the numbers on that page are all the same from last month because I believe for the first time since I've been doing this, we've had a month with absolutely zero students withdrawn or dropping out. So that's really good news. Onto page three, this is the mobility data. At the ELC, we've had eight students register in and five leave. At elementary, 19 in and 13 leaving. At the middle school level, 27 in and 11 leaving. At the high school level, 28 in and 17 leaving. So we see a pattern here. Total, we have 82 students registered in the month of November with 46 students leaving. For the year, we have a total of 380 students coming in with 168 students leaving. And onto the last page of the report, our failing grades. We track our failing grades. So for quarter one, we've had 86 ninth graders that are failing one grade. Last year, we had 59. Last year, we had 59. But for two failing grades, it dropped from 53 last year to 39. For students with three failing grades, it's dropped from 39 last year to 32. And for students with four or more failing grades, last year we had 88 grade-nine students, and so far, we only have 28. So a total percentage dropped from, so this is students with at least one failing grade. For the year, last year it was 46%, and at this point, it's 37.9%. For 10th graders, one failing grade went from 39 up to 79. For two failing grades, went from 38 up to 47. But three failing grades went from 33% down to 22. And for four or more failing grades, it went from 35, I'm sorry, 65 down to 33. So the total percent did have a slight uptick, so from 40% of students with at least one failing grade, and currently, we have 41.2%. And with that, that concludes my indicators of success, and I'll open it up to questions.
You really set me up for failure here, because I will ask, you going anywhere after you take off from here and going to, before going to Melrose? You going on vacation, taking the family to Boston?
I'm gonna try to do that, yes.
All right, there we go. That was my one and only question for the day, just to not break with tradition.
Thank you for the innocuous question to end your tenure.
Just one really brief question. On the attendance page, there's a section or a call, a role for postgraduate. Can you just elaborate what that population is?
So that is for, you know, so students with complex IEPs, we can continue to provide services beyond the senior year. So we can educate them up through 22 years old, so that's what those students are.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you. We have our student representative update.
Good evening, school committee. First things first, I just want to say thank you for your service in the school committee. Chairwoman Kelly Garcia, school committee members Roberto Jimenez, Ms. Naomi Zabat, and Ms. Jeanette Velez. And I just want to go a little bit off script. Thank you, Kelly, for everything. You are truly a huge inspiration to me, and you're one of the reasons why I want to make it to the legislation branch, so I can make a change in our community and others. And to Mr. Jimenez, Ms. Zabat, and Ms. Velez, I haven't gotten to know you much, but I do hope wherever you go, you will make a difference and continue to affect young people like me and others for the better. So, good luck on your new endeavors. And a favorite quote from mine is, "Keep your worries small and your dreams big." Also, warm welcome to the new school committee members joining us next month and the new chairwoman coming 2024, Kathy Cabral. So huge congratulations. Now moving on to CHS updates. The Drama Club has its own production of animal, had its own production of Animal Farm this month. And from what I heard, it was a positive experience. So huge congratulations to the Drama Club from CHS. The Teen Action Project, also known as TAP, and the Youth Food Movement held its second self-care fair, where staff and students came today to enjoy and get their self-care on for free. That's also a huge turnout. From December 7th through 12/15, the coat drive will still, will be available. And we can take whatever, it's new, used coats, or any other winter accessories. Parent-teacher conferences in a week, which is December 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00. As Chelsea's preparing to go into break, please attend the conference on 12/14. And then principal's coffee. All parents and guardians are invited to attend. 12/20, December 20th, from 8:15 to 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would also first like to thank all the committee members leaving and transitioning on into their next journeys. Special thank you to Ms. Velez and Mr. Jimenez for also just, I haven't gotten to know Kelly as much or Ms. Zabat, but it's been an honor, like, knowing you guys and having to be on this roll and kind of see everything go on from behind the scenes, from a student perspective. It's inspiring, because it shows that all the hard work that you guys put in, and from like years. Like, you guys have done this consistently and consecutively as well. So I would just like to thank you guys for advocating and putting in all the hard work. You guys are all truly be missed. And then I'd also like to give a special shout-out to Ms. Cabral, Ms. Velez, again, Mr. Jimenez, for supporting Sarae and I going down to the joint conference that Dr. Abada also talked about, where members of her cabinet and also school committee members were there to support us, to talk about the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that we have been doing here in our district, and how much of a success it's been. Just being here, I've heard some of the statistical data that we're the most diverse, I believe, in some categories. And that's just like wonderful to hear, because it's just, I'm sitting here, this is my second meeting, and it feels like home. Like, I can look around, and like I said, it feels like home. I could look around, see people that look like me, and people that could relate, and it's just, it's welcoming. And also, Ms. Penya had left, and Ms. Paisley isn't here with us, but also thank you to them as well for chaperoning us for the joint conference and getting us there safely. Now to start the update at the high school. Fall sports has finally came to an end, and winter track and basketball and cheer will start next week. The track team has a meet over the weekend at the Reggie Lewis Center at 10:00 a.m. And please support the middle school girls and boys basketball team at Clark Ave at 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. on Monday, along with the girls' high school team at Somerville. If you can't support the boys here in Chelsea, they got a game at 4:00 and they got a game at 6:00. Go support the girls there in Somerville. Same exact situation. They got a game at 4:00 and they got a game at 6:00. Good luck to all our athletes. To wrap it up, we also got, we had a wonderful performer, wonderful musician to start this out. And as you recall, in my first meeting back in October, we had two wonderful musicians also come up here. Well, this December 12th at 6:00 p.m. at the high school, you could go watch the winter concert, check out all our musicians at Chelsea High, and you could go support by buying hot chocolate bombs. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Very full report. It's great to have those wonderful updates from you. So the next report is our personnel update, and you can see here, we've hired 7% Caucasian, 93% Hispanic, 0% Black, and 0% Asian Pacific Islander. Then we turn over to our next report, which is our student enrollment. As you looked at the students coming in that Mr. Delaney talked about and the students going out, we have more students coming in than we have going out. So we are now at 6,236 students, growing a little bit each week. And I'd like to commend these reports to the record.
Thank you, Dr. Bada. Alrighty, team, we have two things to vote on, and then we're done.
Oh, yes. The subcommittee meeting minutes.
Thanks, team. When a consideration and action to accept $100,000 from Dessie for the Target Assistant Grant. Veronica, roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Motion passes. Consideration and action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2023-2024 to amend the school committee clerk stipend. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Colas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Big yes.
Mr. Jimenez Rivera?
Absolutely.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Well, these are yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Super yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
The motion carries. Alrighty, team, that is the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or any last? Yes, Mr. Jimenez?
I just want to make sure everybody knows that I think it's the senior class is selling the Chelsea Day shirts, or who was it that's selling? Yep, so the senior class is selling the Chelsea Day 2023 shirts. Since Chelsea Day 2023 did not happen, this is like getting like Atlanta Falcons Super Bowl merchandise. So if you're interested in getting one, talk to Jimmy. Yeah, they're nice shirts, so it's got art by a student in the front. So, yeah, they're nice shirts and limited merchandise, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Any others? No, alrighty. Bueno, in closing, I'd like to thank once again my community of Chelsea, my school committee members, my students across the city. It has been an honor serving on the school committee and an honor to serve as a chairwoman over the last four years. I thank you, and do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Yes, of course.
I wasn't gonna talk, because I just wasn't going to, because I don't want to cry. I guess I want to say thank you to all of you that are leaving. I have been here the longest, and I've seen many come and go. I, Jeanette, came in right after me, about a year after I did. And she has been my partner in crime since. And for me, it is amazing to see the changes that the school committee has taken. All the changes that we've been through. We've been through so much. And to see so much diversity now among me is incredible, and it makes me so proud. It's what I hoped for when I first came in. I came in and very much diversity was not the big thing. So to see it have changed the way that it has, it makes me so proud and so happy. But so sad to see Jeanette, Kelly, who I've seen since she was born, which really dates me, so. Let's not talk about that, but I grew up with Kelly's mom. And to just see, to have met the different personalities that I've learned from each and every one of you. And I'm so excited to see the new ones that are coming in and hopefully learn more from them as well, because there's still so much that needs to happen and so much that needs to be done. And I know that having Kelly and Roberto on city council now will be a huge advantage for us. I think it will be a big help in bridging the relationship between city council and school committee, which is something that's been a big thing in my mind for many years. So I look forward to the years to come. I look forward to maybe one day having Naomi back here again. It was a pleasure working with the four of you. And our relationships, the personal part of it, will never end. So I wish you the best of luck, and thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you, Anna. Oh, boy, so many tears today. Bueno, good night, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Alrighty. Meeting adjourned at 8:07.